Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this beautiful day and for the moisture that has come to our valleys, and we are thankful for the blessings we receive every day. We're grateful to live in this beautiful area and thankful for the privilege that we have to...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting now at 6:03. And I'd like to have a roll call.
Mayor Hicks.
Captain.
Mayor Protan Vasquez.
Here.
Councilor Reynolds.
Here.
Councilor Lucero.
Here.
Councilor Padilla.
Here.
Yes, we have... Right. At this point, I'd like to get an approval for the agenda.
Is this for today?
Yes, sir. May 30.
Yeah, I approve the agenda for today, May 30.
I second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Citizens to address the council, we have William Yardro.
Let me fix this first before I go on speaker.
You can hold it if you want to hold it.
Let's just hold it.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, city manager, councilors, thank you for having me. I'd like to start by saying thank you for each of your support and contributions to the Main Street District. I'd like to say I appreciate Councilor Reynolds for her hands-on approach and commitment to the Caboose project, as well as your time that you sacrificed to be at our meetings. I appreciate the mayor's personal work... Excuse me, I'm shaky. I'd like to appreciate the mayor's personal work to coordinate projects to commemorate our veterans in the Main Street District. I greatly appreciate the city manager's foresight, counsel, and support of our projects and programs. I appreciate Councilor Vasquez's constant support and his participations in our Main Street events and projects. And I appreciate Council Padilla for his interest and support in Main Street. And unfortunately, I haven't had my many personal dealings with Councilor Lucero, but I hope to change that within this next year. I approach you this evening to ask for your continued support and to further ask for an increase toward your already generous contribution. If I were the city, I would see Main Street as a machine or a tool, or a machine that has no purpose without the city itself that we serve. But with that said, this also means we're an investment, and we're also only as effective as the support we get. This past year, you generously provided us with $35,000 to provide for my salary as well as operating costs for the organization. With that money, we made leaps and bounds to not only strengthen our organization, but the Main Street District as well. We've been busy coordinating events like the Veterans Day celebration, the 22nd Annual Holiday Life Parade, small business workshops, community cleanup, and the Seven Trails of Gold Outdoor Festival, which is this weekend, if you guys would like to go. These events bring in tourists and help develop the properties and people of grants to make way for commercial prosperity. Not only that, but behind the scenes, we've been hard at work to revise our organizational plans to make way for a new Main Street, for a new direction, new vision. These include our economic and capacity building strategies, which tell us what we're doing for the next five years ahead of us. Project implementation plans, which give us specific details for every project, program, and event that we coordinate, and having our budget and contract ready for the next fiscal year before the year actually starts. These are all great things we've been able to accomplish, that we've been hard at work to make sure that we are in the right place when the new year comes in. We're seeing a revival of our organization with four new board members and community members steadily showing interest in becoming committee members. I would ask that you follow the community in our foreseen growth, provide us with an increase of $5,000 to your contribution totaling in $40,000. Talks with the manager have shown that while the budget does not maybe reflect that, I would like to still ask and get your support and see if there's any way you can make it possible to strengthen our support with you, the city. We believe that with your strength and support, we will begin to see the dawn of thriving downtown in grants. Thank you for your time and consideration. I stand to answer any questions or comments.
Great question. Council? Councilwoman?
Thank you.
Is it here that you request an additional funding?
Yes, sir. Yes, councilor.
What's that amount?
The additional amount would be $5,000. We total currently get $35,000 from the city, and then we are requesting for $40,000, which we originally... Excuse me. Which we originally had whenever we had a... How to say? A constant executive director, a non-staffed and experienced executive director. In the past two years, we haven't had that, so $35,000 was reasonable. But I've been on a year, and I don't plan on leaving anytime soon, so I'm making work and trying to, you know, do grants to Main Street and the service for city grants.
So that's the main reason because of what you're bringing on as far as the $5,000 additional?
The reason for the $5,000 is just to further support and strengthen our organization, not only my salary, but to our organizational capacity to go on to help us with just day-to-day financing and, I guess, budget.
Rick? So did you get $35,000 last year, or were you on on board?
We got $35,000 last year. Yes, councilor.
And did you spend it all?
Yes, councilor, we did.
And they also get an additional $10,000 from Rogers Tax.
That is true. We got $10,000 for this upcoming fiscal year. Last year, we asked for $10,000 and received $5,000 graciously from the council, so, you know, regardless of Rogers Tax, the Rogers Tax is for advertising and almost pays for our events, which is part of our contract, we need to do, and we do it faithfully. And the $5,000 isn't just for events, but for myself, for the organization to further buy us, you know, maybe a better computer, you know, maybe get me a vehicle that's reliable that I can make to work so I can actually do the job that you're asking me to do. That kind of thing.
Council Reynolds?
You're gonna put me out of spot, aren't you?
Yes, ma'am.
And how much revenue do you bring here?
Revenue? Well, we are a nonprofit. We do fundraising initiatives.
And how much money do you raise in your fundraising?
In the past... This past year, with the spring and fall community yard sale, we raised $750. And with our... It's hard to say because our budget is based on projects, and we raise funds based off projects. For instance, with the Caboose project, it's a... Not necessarily something we planned for in the budget this past year, but it's something that we moved into and tried to raise funds with our Buy a Brick campaign to pay for that project separately. And so as far as funds that we generate, just for example, with right now, the Seven Trails of Gold, we are seeing a surplus. That's something we didn't see last year. We might have broken even, but the traffic control plan made a... Gave us some more money than we thought last year, took away a little bit more. So this year, we planned for and compensated, and we're actually seeing a surplus, and so I could say maybe $2,000. It's hard to say because the event hasn't finished yet, so... But again, that money doesn't necessarily go to us. That money is then put towards our other projects like beautification projects, purchasing amenities, post-out squads on specific businesses to help increase their foot traffic, to get more business, to get more grocery receipts tax into those businesses, into the city.
Well, I think you guys are doing a great job. I think you're moving around, you're actually going and visiting businesses and talking to other potential donors.
Certainly.
And I think it's gonna work out for you, so at this time, I would ask a manager?
It's not an agenda item. He's a public comment.
No, he's not, yeah.
Yeah. I recommend that we do not do an increase for any of the nonprofits. Tonight, we're asking you to cut 2 million of the priority projects that our departments and yourselves have committed to and have asked for, and so I would recommend that we keep all the nonprofits at the same amount that we had last year, and that's on your last budget page. It kind of shows what each of them gets, and I... Unfortunately, I talked to Mr. Yardro about this, and he asked to be on the agenda. The mayor did not allow it on, and so if you want to make that change, you would do it when we do our budget.
All right.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Public comments, discussion on the city charter, we're not even planning, we've known that for the last couple of years. So on the approval of the regular city council minute for May 13, 2019, anybody find anything that they would like to discuss?
I move we approve the city of grants, regular city council meeting of Monday, May 13, 2019.
Fred? Rick?
Yes.
Yes. Sidney?
Yes.
Okay, who's gonna handle this one here? Airport. Or Commander Taxiway Reconstruction, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Protan, councilors, city manager. I'm Tim Archbeck with Armstrong Consultants. I also have Mike Garcia, one of our principals of Armstrong Consultants. We are here to present a task order for the next step in your report. We did their runway a couple of years ago. We did pavement maintenance to get you guys by on the taxiway that was slowly deteriorating. Well, you have a... The next step in this, as the FAA presents, what they want us to do is work from the runway out. So right now, your next project is gonna be your connector taxiways. You have seven of them. They're in pretty bad shape during construction. Couple of them fell apart. I think Ray had the road department do a band-aid fix on, you know, your own city people on one of them. So the next project there is your connector taxiways onto from your... Actually, your taxiway alpha onto your runway. So you have seven of them. So we are proposing to do a preliminary engineering report as directed by the FAA for this year, with the next year following the design. It's usually what the FAA has kind of tasked us is in three years. Do a PER one year, next year, design, the following year, we go to construction. So they have construction money slated for you guys for 2021. So this year, we're looking at doing a preliminary engineering report. Next year, we'll follow up with design on that. And just for your information, the PER, the FAA has slated that as giving them options. They'd like to see three different options on what to do there, you know, full reconstruction. They're always looking at saving money, and so are we, but... So we will do geotech survey on it initially, and then from there, we'll look at different options for yourselves and the FAA to see and the state aviation. So we're presenting a task order for $108,000, and... $108,000, $102,000 for a PER on this. And basically, like I said, we're looking at a minimum of three options. We're going to design on those three options, not full design, but we look at cost estimates on all those options themselves and everything, so that's what we have for you. Also, funding for this project is gonna be 90% FAA money, 5% NMGRT aviation funds, and 5% local match, which accounts for your local match is about $6,000. And I'm here to answer any questions for that.
Okay. Well, we have a letter here from the projects person, and it was the PER in the amount of $116,885.29, when the city shared $5,845.03. Is that the correct amount of money? Because the next piece of paper has engineering total $108,102,000.
Yes, that's the total plus the NMGRT tax added on to that.
Okay, so we're dealing with the city share of the $5,845,000?
Pretty much, yeah. I rounded it off to $6,000. Yes, sir.
So the $116,000 has the GRT in it? Or is that later?
Yeah, the 8.125%, yeah, correctly. Yeah, I just rounded it off.
That's okay. No problem.
So this is basically the report's end and all the improvements?
It'll be the preliminary engineering report for all seven connectors. We look at them. There are some connectors that don't meet FAA criteria right now, so either they're too close to each other, they're not in the right position, so we'll be looking at all that and basically giving you options on that.
My other question is, why do we need a report? Why can't we just go into design?
That is the FAA's rules.
Is it?
Yeah. Yeah. They require for large projects, they require preliminary engineering report. Basically, they give them options. We give them options, and they look at either full reconstruction, we get a million overlay, and that warrant a million overlay, so...
If I understand you right, only seven need work, but we got more than seven?
No, there's seven connectors still.
But we got more than seven?
No, that's how many you have.
Okay.
So, and then once we get our engineering report done, then we'll be eligible to other FAA money?
Correct.
To do the work?
And this money is all under your entitlement money. You get $150,000 from the Fed's in a year. Next year, we'll go into design. It's a little bit more, the full design, we'll have it ready to go, and then we'll have it ready to bid the following year. And at that point, they will be looking at discretionary money plus your entitlement money to get through construction, so... Sidney?
What does the council think about this?
I think we should go.
Okay.
So I move to approve the PER report, connector taxiways for $116,000, $885.29, including those two.
Sidney?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Rick?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't have to leave. Get your money and run.
I just wanna say, you know what? You guys did win at the aviation conference, Airport of the Year, and you know what? That's pretty tacky. You guys got a great product. That's what you get out there. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Is the budget approved, Kimberly?
Yes. Kimberly, clear to go over the budget with you.
Okay. So the first budget I gave you guys two weeks ago, we needed to come up with about $5 million, now we only come up with $2. So that's a good deal.
Kimberly, have you been working, going back and forth, and where can we cut, where can we squeeze dollars out of?
So probably the best thing to do is... Well, I don't know what the best thing to do is. The cuts, we've cut every place that we can find, still leaving a potential raise in for all employees, evenly through all departments. We have had, I guess on the second page, the city of grants, budget consideration, those are some of the special requests that we've received. Not too many of them were able to give, and we're still $2 million short. The budget you have in front of you includes a 3% raise. It includes a 0.25% increase through our para, which is mandated by the state, start that. It includes an increase in our health insurance, because that'll happen every January or July 1st. It keeps our regular special projects intact, the YCC summer program, the fireworks program, the economic development contract, Main Street at $35,000, the bus transit, the Carrot Express at $52,000, Seboa Arcs Council, the COG, and then Future Foundations.
We had... It includes already the increase for those employees that were not gonna be at the new minimum wage. There were 12 employees, six at the senior center, two at the golf... Or five at the golf course that were seasonal, part-time individuals, and one at the library. So we already increased them to the current required minimum wage, so that's in this budget already.
And that includes all of our part-time students. They don't go to the minimum wage, but they do have to go up to the 850, so that's included in there. So basically, we're probably to the last page where we need to look at the capital projects. So to try to make this easier to understand, the top half is revenues, and the bottom half is expenses. And what I did is I color-coded them so you guys could match them. So for instance, the first one is River Rock Trail and federal funding, as well as the Main Street funding that we get. So that total is $425,000 plus $95,000. Well, if you look on the bottom, the River Rock Trail is the first one. It's also in green. It's $825,000. So the difference between those numbers is our match. So some of them, there's no match. It's, you know, funding in, funding out, some of them we have to match it. Everything that's highlighted in yellow and at the bottom are projects that we are receiving funding for, whether it's capital outlay, whether it's our CWSRF loan, whether it's grants, federal, states, whatever. It's money that we're getting and that is already, as Donald says, has the ball rolling. We've started these projects. They're, you know, some of them are ready to be completed, whatever. So everything in yellow really is not negotiable. I mean, because we would be silly, we would lose money, or we already have it... We would lose money that we're being given, or we would lose money that we've invested so far to have the project completed. So really, what's on the table is from everything underneath the yellow, and trying to figure out how we can squeeze out $2 million. And when I say $2 million, because at the May 13 meeting, we said we wanted to keep our reserve at 8 million. So our bottom line right now is 6.1, so we gotta get it back up to 8, which means we've gotta cut.
But also on your third sheet, I made sure to put in requests that we got from departments. And so at the top, it says special request. The fire department made several requests, they're listed there, and the police department made several requests. Those are... Parts of those are included, but a lot of those are not included in the current budget.
What's that, you did go with the front balance?
Yeah, that was a request made by the fire department.
And that reason...
It's not included.
And the reason I put the 3% in the budget for the raise is, I know Modi wants the dollar an hour raise, and that's fine, but I put the 3% in there so you could see what the numbers are. If we did a dollar an hour raise instead of the 3% raise for every employee, that's about $147,000 more, so...
More than the 3%?
More than what's a 3%. Yes. And I felt like since we were trying to find $2 million anyways, that's why I put 3% in there. So of course, it's not a done deal. That's your guys' decision.
We took out the...
Well, although the mayor and I are the best of friends. His, the 3%, I'm more in favor of the 3% versus the dollar. The reason is with the dollar, that's like paying ahead. That would be like me paying my utility bill in the future. I would never do that. Okay? So as far, in my opinion, for me, 3% versus the dollar an hour. Okay, continue.
And that's how I look at it. I, you know, I do have opinions by what some people think, but I'm a numbers person, and numbers don't lie. And I also think that who knows what's gonna happen with the legislature next year? There's a lot of businesses gonna be affected by the minimum wage, and it may or may not... It may get changed. And the other thing, like Laura and I have talked, is, you know, if we're not gonna do it across the board, even raise, then we need to switch to merit bases, and a dollar an hour for everybody doesn't... Is not an equal number. A percentage is an equal number.
With a dollar, if you say, with a dollar an hour, that won't mess us up with a minimum wage, would it?
No.
Because, you know, we already took care of this.
Right. It's already being included.
It's already in the budget.
Minimum wage has nothing to do with the raise that we're talking about.
The minimum wage, if you... But we already took care of the...
Twelve fee problems? Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So already basis.
So the 3% will save us $147,000 versus the dollar raise?
Yes, sir.
So you want us to cut some of these items? Is that what you're saying?
Right.
Yes, and on the bottom, far right-hand side, it says 2.9 million other. That's what all those equal. So we need to cut about 1.9 of that.
So what's our reserve, eight?
Right now, it's at six, so that's why we would like to keep it at eight.
And right now, it's at six.
No, right now, our reserve is at 11.3, but if we do all these expenditures, it's gonna drop it down to six, and we would like to keep it at eight, because our investments are 7.3 million. And I don't think we want to tap into our investments to pay for this.
I brought it.
Well, I see the big ticket there is for 800,000 for the library roof. Is that something that really needs to be done this year?
We had some leaks, and we did have a company come out about two weeks ago, and they spent all day up there working on it. It'll take until we get another rain for us to tell if that took care of it, but...
A gravel car. Metal roof?
The metal roof, yeah. Metal pitch.
Or at the library.
The new one.
Yeah. So in my opinion, that could wait. We, you know, we could... We could wait on that.
So that's even...
Because we did have some work done.
Oh, you figured out 800,000 on the roof repairs, right?
Uh huh. We could wait on our building repair, which is $200,000, because we already have some of that accounted for in our maintenance budget and each department's budget. So this is just additional repairs that we could wait on. We could wait on the sidewalks.
I think we're talking about sidewalks.
What sidewalks are we talking about?
Well, these would be... Each year, we've spent about $300,000 on sidewalks, so various ones. We could wait on that.
How about the Elm Park upgrade?
Yeah, the Elm Park, the Neon Park, the Mesa Park lights. Those are things that could wait another year on.
Yeah.
I'm not so cool on the Mesa Park lights waiting.
Me neither. I think we should light that up. They've waited long enough, and I think it's more of a sensation. I'd like to see at least get, you know, a few lights in there just to kind of light up that area.
Okay, so start with part of it at least?
For part of it, if we can maybe look at...
Special lights?
Yeah.
The Elm Park upgrade, what's that?
We have a proposal from an individual that lives in that neighborhood that she's put before the city to upgrade that park and make it nicer. And she had an architectural firm out of Albuquerque donate some time and come up with a little design, and we don't know what it would cost, but we were hoping to maybe start working on that this year. But I think she's had that planned for probably six or seven years, so I guess she could wait one more year for us. Wait on us, yeah.
$1 million, dude.
And this one for the unanticipated fund there for $500,000? Is that something that we do every year?
Um, we do try to put some money in there, just for things that pop up that we, you know, don't anticipate.
You think if we knock that down to maybe-
One-eighty-nine?
Yeah, three-hundred, maybe, three-hundred.
Yeah.
Three-hundred thousand?
Three-hundred, yeah.
Something like that, or two-fifty? Uh, I don't, I don't know, just, we're looking at the cutting, yeah.
Are we anticipating any money? Any additional funds? Are we addition, any kind of windfall?
We, we are anticipating, um, a little more money with the new water meters. The new water meters are supposed to bring in more revenue.
But that's revenue for me.
That's right.
So, so the budget includes, it's, I'm a little bit conservative. So, the budget is very conservative with our water. Um, it could be a lot more, we, we just don't really know. Same thing with our GRT, you guys got the GRT things I put in your boxes earlier this week, you know, our, it's kinda steady, but, you know, it's, it's, it's not really growing. And so, I put just kinda what it's been the last couple of years, you know, it could, it could be great. I mean, we didn't have the Seven Cities project last year at all, we're having that this weekend, maybe that'll bring in, you know, a big chunk of GRT. Unfortunately, we won't know that until, you know, August, because it takes two months for them to get everything figured out. But, um, the revenue numbers are, are a little bit conservative, so are the expenses, though. So...
Okay, well, I think the design space for well number three needs to stay in there.
Yes.
That's, that's, um, my water.
Right.
Is important.
Yes.
Very.
Yes, okay.
What about abate, abatements?
The abatements, we could wait on that.
What are the abatements, what is scheduled for abatements?
We have some right now, I think there's four-
Is it those, is it the one on, on East, on-
No, the, the current ones will, will get done. There's about four, and I think-
That's the one on, one is on like, is it on-
Stevens, Sergeant?
Sergeant, East Sergeant?
Yes, that one's on the list. Is Mr. Rivas?
And the one on Santa Fe, so those-
Yeah, he's back there.
Yeah.
So those are goals.
The one on Sergeant's on the list right now, right, Mr. Rivas?
That's right. Sergeant, First Street, and Stevens, and on Washington, and First, behind that gas station, there's a house there. And then the Wayside Inn is actually two buildings.
So those are accounted for in this year's budget.
Okay.
We should, uh, abatements, we need to get rid of the building, my son, can we collect that tax on the water?
So I think right now, you're at a million-seven-hundred. I don't know if Kimberly's adding up, so-
Are you, who's, who's adding?
I'm kinda adding it up, or am I right?
We need to keep the road paving projects.
And actually, on the road paving projects, we had a million dollars in there, and I-
I know.
No, but let me, but it's, there's good news. So if you look on the budget, uh, thing, on the, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, the seventh line down, the municipal street, twenty-one-six-hundred, that's the money that we get from a GRT that's specifically slated for roads, as well as the gas tax. And so we get six-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand for that, and so that will be all for roads, plus the three-thirteen, it's still a million dollars for roads.
A million, because, you know, I don't think the citizens will-
No, no, and so, so we didn't cut that, we just moved the money a little bit, so that there's still a million dollars for, for paving projects.
Okay.
Because we have to use that money in that fund only for roads, that's all we can do for.
We need about three-hundred thousand more.
I'm not gonna give on the golf course. The golf course, I'm not giving on that. That's in my district, and I've, I've been fighting for it for three years. I'm not going out not fighting for it. That is not that much money.
No, it's not.
Sprinklers and a mower. I think they have an issue with the mower, because it's not picking up, they mow it, it's not picking up all the grass.
Well, it's hard to get parts for it to mow the mower, so they're having trouble getting parts for it, so.
And I'll just throw a, a numbers thing in there, I don't disagree with you on the golf course, but I think we, and Laura and I've talked about this, I think we need to encourage tournaments and things to bring in more revenue, because if you look on the, on the budget page, the revenue is three-hundred-and-eighty thousand, and their expenses are eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand, double.
But if we don't have it looking good-
Right.
And looking pristine, people aren't going to want to come here and have tournaments.
Right, but we need to get to that point to get them in here, so that that revenue number is not half of the expenses.
Do we knock down the road paving projects, or are we keeping that up here?
We gotta keep that.
We're keeping those.
We gotta keep those.
So, what about the sidewalk? That's two-hundred thousand. Should we wait on those?
We already said-
Does it happen to be the one on Roosevelt?
Yeah, I think so.
No, the one in Roosevelt, I think, um, well, it might be.
It might be the one on Roosevelt that-
Is there one elsewhere, Kimberly? Is there, is Roosevelt elsewhere, Roosevelt sidewalk?
We just lumped them all together.
Okay, so that's it then?
Yeah, we were gonna-
And we had three-hundred thousand, we had two-hundred. And she, she changed it to two.
So how much do I, that Mesa Park lights going to cost?
It was guesstimated, I think Mark got some quotes, sixty thousand.
Have you guys looked at solar? Little?
Yeah, Mark got a hold of the guy, I don't know what, how far it went, but, actually, that, that one day, uh, we did contact him, or Mark did, yeah.
Okay. Cause I know it's gonna be substantially cheaper, you know, if you, if you go that route.
Cheaper?
Yeah, um, yeah, you're looking at about probably four-thousand fixture. I don't know how many fixtures you're looking at, you know, how many fixtures you're looking at?
Ten or twelve?
So it's roughly half of the cost, probably.
Yeah.
Well, something, I think it's for the tall ones?
Yes.
For the streetlights?
Yeah.
If you get some of that, we could save about thirty grand there, or so.
So how, this Neon Park, if we, how much was maybe that going to cost?
The Neon Park was a hundred thousand.
And I don't think we should cut the airport utility development and drainage fuel farm.
They took up already, so we can do it.
Well, if we can keep the Elm, uh, park upgrades, and the Neon Park, Mesa Park lights, just to, just the Mesa Park lights, we're looking at maybe thirty, forty grand there, off, off of that, so, you know.
Are we there yet?
Emily, one-point-four.
You're only at one-point?
So if we keep that at, say, just say roughly fifty grand, so you're knocking off two, two-hundred thousand off that.
Knock two-hundred off that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And what'd you guys decide on the abatements?
Well, that's in council's, yes, quarter.
No, you leave that alone. That's the only thing that's, that's showing improvement in this town by knocking all these buildings down. You know, look at that, removed all those cars the other day.
Well, that's already scheduled for abatements.
I know, but I'm just sure to give you an example.
So, so we're at three-hundred thousand is where we have left. And so what we can do is, we can, I can go back in and look at some of the revenue numbers for the water department, the sewer department, the trash department, and try to come up with some revenues that we're predicting, as long as you guys are okay with that, knowing that it's-
Well, I have an issue with that one also, because, what date was it? Where's my notes? There was, oh, was it in January? January seventh was the meeting about, where's my stuff? The, bear with me. January seventh were the utility annual CPI increase, the arbitrary increase of our water, sewer, and garbage, where I didn't think that was appropriate. But we didn't vote on anything, because it wasn't an action voting, it was an automatic.
Right, it's part of our ordinance.
It's part of the ordinance. So, according to the minute meetings, the next meeting, that item was tabled. And my question was for today, is our bill going to go up in July or not? That we're supposed to be doing a study, okay? I'm going through everything in two-thousand-and-nineteen that I think they still need answers on. So what's the status of that? Because if that increase is going in, I don't think it should be, there should be a study to see arbitrarily increase, just because you can, is, you can change an ordinance. I don't think that's fair to our, you know, using a national thing for grants, New Mexico.
So, for, to do a study, we would probably need to hire a company to go in and study, like our water, sewer, refuge fees, and see, you know, what the expenses are, to compare them. Um, yeah, that's-
So, I'm gonna have no say on that one, the bill goes up in July.
Well, is it July, Melissa? I think it's already gone up, hasn't it?
Yeah, just the trash goes up in July first, but the water went up January first, and the sewer was, uh, March first.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and it does seem unfair on the one hand, but I mean, costs for everything go up all the time, regularly. I mean, and those costs have to be passed through somewhere, whether it's an accounting software, or a sales tax, or a gas tax, or-
Yeah.
Waste management increase their bill to us.
Just another one of those things, if I don't like something, you just do it anyway. Okay. Don't have to worry about that one, do I? Okay, but I have others.
Well, let me ask you this, a golf course, sprinklers? Do we really need them?
Yes, we really do.
We really do.
Nearly. Without them, that course would dry out.
And it's an old system, so we've been placing a, a set of panels at a time, cause it is so expensive, but they can't get parts for the-
The old ones?
Yeah, the computerized system. So, basically, Kimberly's saying we can work to try to come up with the other three-hundred thousand somewhere in the rest of our budget. We'll try to scrape it up somewhere.
If you guys are good with that.
Yeah, um, yeah, some things will just have to wait, but, hopefully, just a year.
Where are we at right now, Kimberly?
We're three-hundred thousand short.
Three-hundred thousand.
Oh, that's just-
And that, that-
That's small.
And it seems like a lot, trying to look at these numbers, but if I go back to the general fund, or something, or to the water fund, or something, I can, I can find something.
And so, yeah, you all need to decide what you want to do as far as employee raises.
So wait, back up, so I just wanna clarify this. So, we took out building repairs, we took out sidewalks.
Where, where, okay.
Okay, we put the Elm Park upgrades, we dropped it to fifty thousand. We dropped unanticipated to two-hundred-and-fifty thousand.
Two-hundred-and-fifty, I think.
Unanticipated, we dropped to three-hundred thousand.
Okay, three-hundred, okay. And then, uh, the library roof is gone completely. Okay. Let's hope the patch comes.
Yeah.
Okay, try it, Laura.
Okay, so, what's your recommendation as far as employee raises?
Have you, have you guys thought about it? Council thought about the, the raises?
So where is the money coming from?
We already, uh, included it in the current budget.
Okay.
A three percent.
Okay.
Across the board. If you want to do the dollar, it will increase by a hundred-and-forty-five thousand.
Yeah, and the reason for that, the mayor thought that we were getting ahead of, of having to pay out more in the future?
Right, that, that's part of his reasoning. And the other part of it is, so, let's say we have somebody making nine dollars and fifty cents an hour right now, who's been with us for a very long time. So if we raise somebody who just started, who was making minimum wage to nine dollars an hour, then they're only, what did I say, they're only fifty cents separated. So if we were to raise everybody by a dollar, it would move everybody equally, so that the separation between that minimum wage, wage, wage raise would be equal for everybody. And, and while there's some logic to that, I, I do think that, I do think what you just said, I think we're, we're putting the cart before the horse, first of all. And second of all, I think we're, I think if there's people who are making nine dollars and fifty cents an hour who deserve more than that, then they need, then that needs to be addressed on an individual basis. I don't think to do it across the boards, to give somebody a ten percent raise, making ten dollars an hour, is, is what we should do.
At this point, um, I'd like to ask the council for a motion? On a three percent or a dollar, yeah?
Yep, due tomorrow.
Yes, we got it here tonight.
What do you think, Fred?
I don't wanna make this heartless motion.
It is. It, it is heartless, but you can also look at it as that it's fair. And, you know, when I started a year ago, we talked about merit raises, and, you know, we really should, we really should focus getting there, so that, so you don't have to make this, it's, you know, are all hundred-and-forty-five employees deserving the same amount every year? No, they're not. And that's reality.
At least they are.
No, they're not.
In my little world.
Make a motion.
You make a motion for what, for the three, or the dollar?
I'll make a motion. Uh, I think, uh, across the board is fair, you know, and not having to pay additional funding, that could be hard for us this year, so, uh, I think a three percent increase is fair for everybody. And, is that something we're gonna do every year?
Not necessarily.
Sure, so we might move to the merit in the future.
What she says, look, look into it, you're maybe, you know.
So I'll make a motion, and so it's going to three percent across the board.
Oh, look at the seconds.
I need a second.
I have nowhere to be. I can be here all evening.
I can't, I have to go back and put these numbers in. Gotta pick one or the other, guys.
It's either a dollar or three percent.
Right.
I second.
Okay. Fred?
Yes.
Sunny?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, so then the sec, the next one is to approve the interim budget, the resolution should approve the interim budget. And what it needs to say, Ms. Brenda, is it needs to say, approving the interim budget with noted changes that I will make and complete tomorrow, put in everybody's boxes, and it will be attached to the resolution. Got my sense?
And we wanna note that, um, we need to do the transfers within the numbers, so that we don't have any negatives in the very far right corner, in the far right column.
DFA does not want you to have any negatives in any of your funds. So, once we get through making the decision about stuff, then I'll go in, for instance, um, the second fund, corrections, is a negative ninety-four thousand, I'll do an interfund transfer from the general fund to that. And so that middle column that says transfers, where all there's a bunch of zeros right now, there'll be numbers in there for whatever those transfers need to be to cover those negative balances. So, and that's just a-
Yes.
I've got something, I got a note.
Okay.
For the sidewalks that you guys took out, two months ago, we awarded a construction management task order that included Roosevelt Avenue sidewalk. So, if we take it out, that's, I mean, that task order's been approved. So, I know you had said, Mark, or, Public Works had it some, about a million in paving, can we- Can we at least do 200,000 and complete Roosevelt Avenue?
Yeah, do we already have a requisition, like did we create a purchase order for it?
Yes.
So it'll come out of this year's budget. So we should be good.
Oh, okay, because it won't be expensed until after July.
That's okay, it's already.
As long as, as long as a purchase order has already been done.
All right, thanks.
So we just need a motion to approve the resolution now.
This one?
Yes. And there's no numbers or anything on it, it just says the interim budget. And what we'll do is we'll attach this one once I correct it. And that will be in the official minutes.
Why do you make a motion for a resolution 19-1631?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve the interim budget approval for resolution 19-631.
I second.
Fred?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Do we have to sign this by tomorrow?
Yeah, Brenda, I'll have the
They'll have the papers in a minute.
And actually, yeah, I do, because I have to submit it with the budget tomorrow.
So can they sign the one that I have here?
Yes.
And then we just do the attachment with.
And then we'll do the attachments.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Kimberly. Thank you all. Leave the light on, please. Moving on, number six, Washington Avenue Bridge Replacement Task Order, who's gonna have it?
I'll just introduce Donnie from Moser, but now that the budget's approved, the Washington Task Order for Design is included in that budget. So, and then the two resolutions following are relative to the budget being approved now, so anyway, the Washington Task Order, we had it before you guys last meeting, but there was no action to it, so the mayor asked for it to be the next meeting. So anyway, Donnie from Moser Company is here to provide you guys a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Potem, councillors, city manager. Again, my name is Donnie Donovan with Wilson and Company, and here to present the Washington Avenue Bridge Replacement Project Task Order. The handout that I just provided is a little background information. Basically, at the last legislative session, it's a legislative session, they passed a House Bill 649 with additional, with additional funding. So if you turn to the, to the second, second page, it passed this last year, 2019. And the House Bill provides funding for projects relating to the public peace, health, safety, and welfare, providing definitions, creating the local government transportation project fund, providing for distributions for local government transportation infrastructure projects, and making it an appropriation. So this funding, what we're trying to do is, is design the Washington Bridge project so that we can apply for, for this funding, for transportation projects. It's, if you turn to the next page, the funding is 95% grant, 5% match by the city. Transportation infrastructure is defined by highways, streets, roads, bridges, crossing structures, and parking facilities, including all areas for particular use for travel, ingress, egress, and parking. And so the city right now has two shovel-ready projects that are, are prime for this funding, including the Second Street Channel and CBC structures, which would, would be from San Jose Drain to Roosevelt, basically, and include two additional CBC structures and a concrete line channel, which is already designed. And, and the Washington Avenue roadway and drainage. Actually, that project just got turned down, the Water Trust Board application just got turned down for the roadway itself. So that, that design wouldn't be, or the Washington Avenue itself, from Smith to the Grants Canyon Royal, would not be built with this bridge. But with this task order, with the design, we'd be able to apply for the House Bill 694 funding and get the bridge built. Turn to the next page. So the Washington Avenue Bridge Replacement, it would be a $1.5 million construction budget. It would include a bridge structure, a single span, designed for HL93 loading, not just the current engineering design standards. And it would pass, we would design it based on the drainage master plan that we've completed previously. And, and we prepare the plan specification and estimate so that we could prove that we're shovel-ready for the funding, for the HB694 funding. And then that last bullet point, you know, we were hoping to get the rest of Washington built as well, but that didn't pass. If you turn to the next page, so this, this section here shows what the bridge would look like, which would be basically exactly like the Nimitz Bridge that was built recently. Pre-stressed concrete beam. And so this is a different area, so it would be a different design. And, you know, we'd have a geotech report, a structural engineer designed this, this bridge, but it would look very similar to the Nimitz Bridge. And if you turn the page, this is a map showing the area. So basically, you know, Wilson and Company created a, or completed a mini drainage master plan for this, for this area. The Jefferson Project is going to be constructed a little bit later in the summer. And, and, but this shows, shows the area where Jefferson and Washington meet at the Grants Canyon Royal. So we'd be constructing the bridge at, at the Washington Crossing of the Grants Canyon Royal, and then a couple of drop structures in the upstream of the, of the bridge itself, basically to get to our ultimate conditions profile of the channel.
Questions?
Any questions?
Can you assure me that this bridge has sidewalks on either side? Because the George Haddish Bridge was designed with sidewalk only on one side.
I'll, I'll make sure we get sidewalks on both sides.
But I can't tell from the design. Sidewalks on both sides of the bridge.
Yeah, I, I'll definitely make note of that, and we'll have, yeah, the section doesn't show that, but we'll get, we'll put sidewalks on both sides, make sure we accommodate conditions on both sides. And so, so this, this task order includes the analysis, you know, environmental permitting. We do our hydrologic and hydraulic analysis, bridge design, geotech report, DOT requirements, certifications and whatnot. And then delivery of, of final plans, specs, and estimates. And we do, we would have to get this done pretty quick to apply for the, for the funding, within about four months. And we're asking for 144,000, 251.65, including gross receipts tax.
Needs to be done. Your first thing, Sydney?
I only care about sidewalks.
But now the work we have to make, the funding you guys have planned for.
Well, the
I know it's approved and everything, but you said shovel-ready by September, that's winter coming on.
Yeah, so that's, that's the importance of getting the design, the analysis and design done before September to apply, to make it shovel-ready for, for the HB694 funding.
Rick?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the funding for the Washington Bridge replacement of 144,000, 251.65.
Second.
Sydney?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
For the Washington Bridge. Resolution 19-1633?
Yeah. 1632 is for the, is it for the bridge, and the other one's for the Phase 2, Second Street Channel. That bridge will have sidewalks and rails on both sides. Because the school's down the way and the family said it'd be silly.
So we thought George Haddish Bridge was, you know, that had happened with that one.
True.
So this resolution just says we're, we're going to be applying for that.
Exactly, and, and it's in the budget now and all that.
Sorry.
Yeah. And with the 95% state and 5% match, that's, it'd be silly not to, with these projects that are necessary, because
I entertain a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve resolution 19-1633. 32 is included, is that what?
I think we need to do it.
Okay, 1633.
Second.
Fred?
Yes.
Yes. Rick? Sydney? Okay. Okay, now we move on to resolution 19-1632, for Set of Three Channel Phase 2.
The DOT did ask which project would be a priority, and we did identify Washington Bridge as there's 50,000, but some estimate there may be 60,000, 70,000. But that's throughout all the districts in New Mexico, so this district may end up with 10, 12, so we'd be lucky to, if we get one project, maybe we're real lucky to get two projects, so anyway, Washington Bridge would be a priority.
Any other motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 19-1632.
Second.
Sydney?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thanks.
Okay, these are a total of the advisory board for the golf course?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve Ralph Lucero for the advisory board.
You made a motion. How come it wasn't approved last night? Wasn't he on it?
Okay.
I think the mayor recommended that we not approve him. He thought it was a conflict of interest because of his county commission position. But Ralph checked on that, and it is not a conflict.
No problem, I second.
Sydney?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Approval of Advisory Board applicant Kena Hamidam?
She's not here, huh?
No, I noticed Ms. Dickens was here but left.
I make a motion we approve Kena Hamidam.
Second.
Sydney?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Rick? Number 11, approval of Recreation Board applicant renewal, Norma Day Patterson?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Norma Patterson on the Recreation Board.
Second.
Sydney? Fred? Rick?
Yes.
Approval of Recreation Board applicant renewal, Shirley R. Dickens?
I have a question, Chris. Some of these applicants, some are one year, some are two years. Yeah, what's that about?
They overlap.
Right.
Like the cemetery board, you guys, you got some that they overlap for two years, and the yellow ones for a year, so I don't know what that was. I know the cemetery board is because I was on it.
Okay. Yeah, some have no information, some have one year, some have two year, and some have no information. Okay.
Well, see, I got an answer for that one. A lot of times, you don't have any board members signing up, so they'll stay in there for another year.
And that way, the ones that are more experienced, it doesn't have to be you.
They'll, they'll continue.
And again, I will review my question. Who do these advisory boards advise? They sure don't advise me. I'd like to be advised.
I agree with you there, Cindy, they should have a couple of national.
Yeah, we could probably have them start coming and reporting. They turn in minutes, and I do review them, and I attend most of their meetings as frequently as I can just to hear their feedback, so we can start trying to provide that information for the council.
I noticed the only time they come around is when they want something.
Have you noticed that too?
I noticed a little.
Okay, so we move on to
Move on.
Approval of Recreation Board applicant Anna Marie Lopez?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Anna Marie Lopez on the Recreation Board.
I second.
Sydney?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Approval of Recreation Board applicant Shirley R. Dickens?
I make a motion we approve Shirley Dickens to the Recreation Board.
I do.
Sydney?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Rick? Approval of Recreation Board applicant renewal Floyd Rico?
Yep, let's make a motion to accept Floyd Rico on the Recreation Board.
Second.
Okay, so is there any comments from the city council and the manager?
No, just wanted to thank you, I know the budget decisions are hard. We're doing very well financially, it's just we have a lot of projects in the boilerplate right now, so we can't do them all at once, but we've got a lot going on, and that's great. We're accomplishing a lot, and I appreciate your conscientiousness on trying to prioritize and do what you know your constituents want.
Rick?
No.
Fred?
Yeah, yeah, it goes back to what we discussed a while ago, guys. I'd like to have an attack to Laura about this, I know it's kind of hard, but Modi doesn't want it, but department heads, not all of them, but one meeting, about one each meeting. The chief of police and the, and the fire chief are here all the time, even the captain, the captain Charles over there, you know what I mean? They should come and say a three-minute speech, they don't have to go to the three-minute deal, they could say, you know, like that lady did for the senior citizens not too long ago. You know, we're doing this, and we're doing that, or whatever.
Usually I try to schedule one department head to present at each of the meetings, and it depends on whether or not the mayor allows, depending on how long the agenda is.
That's what I meant, you know, they don't have to come one, you know, couple of minutes, they say, I'm doing this, guys, I need a chair or table, whatever. But, you know, it'd be nice that she said a while ago, recognize people and advisory. Who do they advise? They could advise us what they're doing.
They must be working on some things, concerns or whatever else, you know, so it'd be good to know.
Good to hear what their concerns are, or what they're
Well, I've got something here on those boards that you're talking about. We may not, we, the council, may not hear it, or Laura, but they do have a board, and there is our citizens approach them for answers. Me being on the Recreation Board for five years, I know, because they would come to me all the time. And same with the Cemetery Board. And same with the cemetery board. They'll go within their leadership, you were there, Fred? You know, so, yeah, so they're all doing their jobs. We just don't see them. But they're all doing it, at least we...
But like I said, it'd be nice, you know, to see who they are. I don't know half of those people.
Okay, we could start scheduling them to come and talk about some of the things they would like to see happen. That'd be great. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Sydney? Go for it.
Okay. One item is already, you know, whatever. But, I still can't find my... But there are times when I actually ask individuals or people in a department or people who are here speaking, you know, if they could do something. And it seemed like over three years now, bad, it's like, oh, let's all blow off Cindy. It doesn't matter. You know, I'll get, you know, I have so many, and I keep every piece of paper. But I asked, you know, like, what did I ask? I asked one department head if there could be a map of the city of Grants with areas annotated in some way as to where are the thefts, where are the assaults, where are the burglaries, you know? And the response is, we'll have to see if we have that technology. Well, let me, you know, you, there exists a map of the city of Grants. Those exist. Put it maybe a little bit bigger so I can see the numbers on it. At the front entrance of City Hall, there's a place where you can post things behind the glass. Put, make a little legend, little pushpins. I prefer the little round ones that are smaller. Legend red, theft. Put the little red pins in there. Green, auto theft. Put a little pushpin in there. How much does that take? And if, I'm sure, at some point, a pattern will evolve. Let us look. If you won't provide, I don't need individual information. I want the information for the community so they know what is happening in different places. I don't know why that is so difficult. I volunteered to push in the pins. But, you know, this is something, why? It's another one. Oh, yeah, blow her off. Just continue to blow her off. Okay, the next one is, I have been waiting over three years. Over three years for one word to change in one ordinance, Ordinance 071167. Second page, line 2. Members of the city council shall receive annual compensation for performance. That word I've requested and requested and requested, that word to be changed from shall, which is mandatory, to can, may, or should. Over three years, I've waited for this. Not ever placed on the agenda. One word, one ordinance. Okay? If I don't want to be paid, I should have that option. I don't care what the other people do. I have done this for over three years. The other thing is, we were talking ahead. Went to the golf course on May 3rd. There were like five of us because all we are receiving, all some of us are receiving are not good reports. I went there today to walk the area with my stick because of snakes. Walked the same area we did the carts in. No improvement. That's what we were talking about at the beginning of the meeting. There's millions and millions of dollars in that golf course. I'm not going to let that go down. The people need to maintain it. It can look pristine if people do their jobs. That's not my responsibility to do the job. It's the responsibility of the city manager to get her people to do their job. They got a raise, not enough in my opinion, but they need to start working for their money. Okay, I'm not gonna, and all I'm hearing are bad things. The only two things in my district that have been a big issue or city things, the golf course and the animal shelter. The beginning of my term, it was the animal shelter. It was every time. It was this, this, this. The end of my term, it's the golf course. People getting together. And when you're smoking out there, pick up your butts. Thank you so much for your time.
Make a motion to adjourn? I make a motion.
I second. I stop.
Thank you all for being there. Appreciate it. Hope you all learned something today.